This conference will now be recorded.
Everything good?
All right, we're going to call this meeting of the Sedalia City Council at order. We're going to open with legislative prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance. Captain Matt's here at the floor.
Would you stand as able to join me in an invocation? Dear Lord and Father of us all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the City Council of Sedalia, mayor, administrators, staff, ward members meet to hear about, discuss, and make decisions for the betterment of Sedalia and of its citizens. We are grateful for their service and dedication to our community. We ask your protection for all of their city and county first responders who work 24/7 to serve and protect us, often at their own peril. We ask your blessing and comfort, especially tonight, for all of the victims of Hurricane Helene. We hope that their troubles will be ended soon. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic. So many thousands have fought and died to create and preserve it for these 247-plus years. Please bless and protect all of our military and civilians serving our great country today, here, and throughout the world. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again, and all of us repaying the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall is absent. Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
First item on our agenda is the service awards. We have one service award. We'll go and invite up Chief Irwin to go and present that.
Greetings, everybody. I'll try to be quick. I told Mr. Kowalski this was going to be quick because he may be leaving. So, um, is that your truck? No. Well, Matt Kowalski is celebrating five years of service to the city of Sedalia today. Is that you? No, okay, not us, uh, not them. Um, Mr. Kowalski is a second-generation firefighter for the city of Sedalia. He has actually graduated by our first Fire One and Two Academy that the city of Sedalia put on, and we actually helped. So I told him this was going to be quick and easy and painless. Um, so congratulations on five years of service to the city of Sedalia. I hope I get 25 more out of you like you did.
All right, next item on our agenda is the approval of the previous session minutes. These are council meeting minutes dated September 23rd, 2024. We'll entertain a motion in a second.
Motion approved.
Any council discussion or amendments to the events that would like to be proposed? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now, we have a bit of unfinished business with regards to Public Works. Before that, I'll go ahead and introduce Chairman Hiller to go ahead and lead us into that.
As reported in our last meeting, the Citizen Traffic Advisory Commission received a request to establish a no parking zone in front of 710 West Sixth Street. The residents there included some foster children with special needs. The parent requested the no parking to improve the safety of these children while getting on and off the school bus, by providing a clear line of sight from the residents of boarding and exiting the bus. Permission voted to recommend approval of the no parking zone to council. During the discussion of this ordinance, a concern was raised regarding setting precedent that would encourage others to come forward to request no parking in front of their homes as a matter of preference. From this debate, a compromise was suggested to limit the no parking to only during school hours. Therefore, council voted to postpone the action of the matter and redirect staff to modify the language of the bill. Since the last meeting, individual council members have been in contact with the request her to work on this compromise, and indications are that establishing a small no parking zone from Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. would accomplish her goals. She's okay with that. Staff has modified the language of the ordinance and presents it for your consideration.
All right, very good. We'll go ahead and call for a reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2024-181. An ordinance establishing no parking in front of 710 West Sixth Street, Monday through Friday during the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Second reading.
I have a motion in a second for the second reading of this ordinance. Do you have any council discussion?
I do. I have a question. Bob, you said a small area. Is that a five? At one point, we were talking about five feet, or is it a one-car length, or?
See, that ordinance reads from the center line of the sidewalk that exits the street there, three feet on each side. Okay, thank you.
Will the curb be painted also, or?
No.
Or just sides put there?
Just sides.
The signs?
Um, since it's not a, um, a all-times no parking, if you paint the curb, that indicates it's no parking anytime, so it would be a sign that no parking between the signs during those time periods.
Thank you.
I had multiple members of our community reach out to me with concerns for this, that they were aware of other people that most likely would be asking for no parking in front of their homes for other reasons as well. And again, I am concerned that this sets a precedence that if we do it for one, then we would need to do it for all. So I'm a little concerned. So with having a bunch of no parking zones throughout neighborhoods can pose a lot of issues for people when there's not a lot of parking to begin with. So I have concerns.
I'll echo that as well, yeah. I absolutely understand the need, but I'm concerned about it, that these individual parking spots kind of popping up all over the place. Did we bring the school district into this conversation yet about?
The busing company?
About the busing company, absolutely. Have we been able to bring them into the conversation, see if they had different options for us that could prevent us from having no parking spots throughout the entire city?
If you're asking me, I mean, there's been discussions with the SROs and, um, in the school district and the busing. They serve on the Safe Coalition with us and those kinds of things. Uh, as far as the Traffic Advisory Commission on this specific issue, I don't know if there was any discussion particular to this one, no.
Again, I absolutely see the need. I want to be able to help out what we can, but I'm worried about, there's just several people, individuals coming to us, and now we've got streets in like the Victorian Towers area that don't have driveways and garages that now we have no parking spots everywhere. I would like, again, to bring the school district into this conversation, see what other options there are that we can help this family out.
Perhaps the bus could pull in the driveway. When I drove by, the driveway looked like it was a nice, smooth, very wide driveway. It seemed to make more sense because the sidewalks are brick, and with the multiple surgeries I've had on my leg and issues that I have with walking, I, if I have the choice of a driveway that's smooth or a brick sidewalk, a hundred times I'm going to take the driveway that's smooth because the brick is treacherous.
Any other council discussion? Well, having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No. Well, yeah, carry on to the next ordinance, yeah, so we retract.
Uh, Jason, can you go ahead and poll the council?
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
No.
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
We're just going to, but we're just still reading the ordinance.
To the second reading.
Okay, I just want to be sure, right, okay, I just want to be sure that everybody's clear where we're at. Okay.
We are.
Okay, um, no.
And Bliss.
Yes. Okay, motion carries. I'll go and go and proceed with the second reading.
Bill number 2024-181. An ordinance establishing no parking in front of 710 West Sixth Street, Monday through Friday during the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
I have a motion in a second. You have a second?
Second.
Any council discussion? Any further discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Foster.
No.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
No.
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
No.
Cross?
Yes.
You have four yes, three no, one absent.
Okay, uh, with the one absent, the bill fail. I'm not able to break the tie. All right, moving along to the roll call of the standing committees. Up first, we have Public Works. Chairman Hiller, you have the floor.
Okay, I've got several items tonight. First of all, going to have a presentation from our strategic planning presentation from our cemetery department, Roger Waters, presenter.
Good evening, Mayor Dawson and council. Just want to kind of give you an overview of what we do at the cemetery and why we're doing it, and give you a few ideas that we have going forward to try to improve our services a little bit. So Crown Hill Cemetery, we provide burial services to citizens of Sedalia, Pettis County, and basically all over central Missouri. It, uh, we're doing casket burials, we're doing cremation burials, underground and above ground. Uh, we put the column bariums in, uh, back in 2012 is when those went in, and, uh, we're using them on a regular basis. Uh, since the cemetery was founded back in February of 1866, we've had 24,909 burials through the end of September of this year. We've had 83 burials through September of this year, and we sold 40 grave lots, and 11 of our niches in the column barium have been sold also. Just to kind of give you an idea, that's about 19 burials behind where we were at at this time last year. Looking at, uh, down the road here in the next few years, if we do that, we're looking at putting in some new roads. Uh, we currently have approximately 1,980 graves left to sell. Some of those, uh, they're in the new addition of the cemetery. They're not the best lots. Uh, we've got a few water issues and things. They're in a low area, uh, next to roadway ditches and things like that, that when we get heavy rains, they could stand in water for, you know, a short period of time. Um, the other option that we have with cremation burials is our column barium. Uh, the last one that we installed was in November of 2019, had 64 niches. As of today, 63 of those have been sold. We have one left. So just sold one this week, and that's where we're at. A new column barium with the 64 niches was also ordered in July of '22 and installed in March of '23. Through September, we have already sold 12 of those out of that 64. Back in 2021, the property to the west of Veterans Memorial Drive, which is still in timber, that was purchased, and this is an area that I would like to make into a park setting and to, and make a cremation area out of it, uh, leaving some of the mature trees. This is, uh, something that would be suitable for that. Uh, I'd like to put in a walking trail there and make this, you know, usable to the public in a, in a different aspect just besides burial grounds. We have a lot of people that walk through the cemetery on a daily basis because of our roadway system not being busy and good roads. Uh, this area right there, uh, will need some work on it. Uh, Public Works is trying to help us with that, and, uh, my understanding is we're going to try to clean this up this fall. If, uh, things work out through the Public Works Department, that if their schedule fits into where we can get this cleaned up, we can move forward and, and try to start processing with this. Um, in that area also, I had brought this up last year, looking at trying to put in a committal shelter in that area also. This is a covered pavilion that's on concrete and intended to provide a temporary shelter from rain, snow, wind, things like that. They would seat around 40 to 50 people, that we would conduct the internment service right there instead of doing it at the grave site, and this is a safety issue that we're looking at on that. We have quite a few services today that are being done as a graveside service instead of being done at the funeral home or at the church, and some of them are pretty large crowds that are gathering, and we are literally standing next to the casket as close as I'm standing to this, and when you put a dozen people right there on that and you've got soft ground, so far we've been lucky that we haven't had an issue, uh, with ground wanting to give away next to these, these graves. Um, in this area that we're looking at cleaning, this is where I'd like to put that, right off of Veterans Memorial Drive. I've, I've got an estimate on it. We're around 65,000 in order to put that in, and that's part of using Public Works, doing the concrete work and things on that, but then we would go out and receive bids to do the rest of it, but that's a rough estimate where we're at. Uh, so that's, that's kind of what we're looking for. Another item that, moving forward into our budget process this year that I would like to look at is our fee structure, that due to inflation costs and our operating expenses, we, uh, have not had a price increase in seven years in any of our fees, and on the back sheet that I handed all of you, there is a price comparison as to Crown Hills at the top, and you can look down through that and see what other cemeteries in the surrounding communities and cities around us here that have city cemeteries, where their grave lot prices are at, where their operating expenses are as far as opening and closing on the graves. So this is something that I think that we need to, in all fairness, look into the people that use our services to pay these fees and not just rely on our tax dollars here from the city to help us continue covering these expenses. So does anyone have any questions at this time?
Any questions, council, for Director Watson? Thank you, Director Watson.
Thank you.
Okay, next, next we've got a authorizing for permanent utility easements. Staff has been working on projects to extend the sewer utilities to the new Bobcat dealership along with some other existing businesses in the area to facilitate the extension of the main across 60 Pike Highway to tie in the existing mains on the west side of the highway. Additional easements needed to be obtained. Staff has negotiated with the property owners and recommend acceptance of the easements represented in the four separate ordinances.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the first ordinance in relation to this matter. That's in the, one is associated with 3805 South Lemon.
Bill number 2024-185. An ordinance approving and accepting a permanent utility easement for sewer and water purposes for property located at 3805 South Lemon. Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the second reading of this bill. Do you have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-185. An ordinance approving and accepting a permanent utility easement for sewer and water purposes for property located at 3805 South Lemon. Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion in relation to it? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Okay, now we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the second ordinance approving and accepting the easement at 3815 South Lemon and 3905 South Lemon.
Bill number 2024-186. An ordinance approving and accepting a permanent utility easement for sewer and water purposes for properties located at 3815 South Lemon and 3905 South Lemon. Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the second reading of this ordinance. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-186. An ordinance approving and accepting a permanent utility easement for sewer and water purposes for properties located at 3815 South Lemon and 3905 South Lemon.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes. Now we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the third ordinance in relation to this matter. This is approving and accepting the easement at 3615 South Lemon.
Bill number 2024-187. An ordinance approving and accepting a permanent utility easement for sewer and water purposes for property located at 3615 South Lemon. Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the second reading of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-187. An ordinance approving and accepting a permanent utility easement for sewer and water purposes for property located at 3615 South Lemon.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes. Now we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the fourth and final ordinance that is approving and accepting the utility easement at 3701 South Lemon.
Bill number 2024-188. An ordinance approving and accepting a permanent utility easement for sewer and water purposes for property located at 3701 South Lemon. Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the second reading of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-188. An ordinance approving and accepting a permanent utility easement for sewer and water purposes for property located at 3701 South Lemon. Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Third item is a budget amendment and called acceptance for the WPT VAC truck repair. Vacuum and jet trucks are used in various ways across the public work functions. The primary use has been for routine maintenance of sewer mains by getting them out to dislodge items that cause problems to keep them flowing properly. More and more, these trucks are proving useful for hydroevacuating, particularly with the vast increase in the amount of fiber optics in the right of ways. Another common use of jetting are colars and other stormwater structures. Due to the event ever increasing usage of this equipment and the age of them, a new truck was purchased in April. What I understand is doing a wonderful job, but it's overworked already. The plan was to replace the oldest truck in the fleet, 2008 model, with this new truck, and then refurbish the other 2013 model. Upon having a detailed assessment made, the cost to refurbish the 2013 model significantly exceeded the amount budgeted. Also, the highest bid for the new surplus 2008 truck, the now surplus 2008 truck, came in well below expectations. Staff worked with the dealer and negotiated a much more favorable trading value for the 2008 truck to apply to the repairs to the 2013 truck. In accordance with the negotiated arrangement, the quoted repair cost of $83,300 will be offset, particularly with a trading allowance of $40,221, leaving a net cost of $43,089.74. Staff recommends approval of the budget amendment and acceptance of the deals traded in the oldest truck to apply to the repairs of the next newer truck in the fleet.
Okay, so as this is a budget amendment, we have a resolution and two ordinances in regards to it. We'll go ahead and begin with the resolution stating the facts and reasons for amending the budget. And call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution 2111. A resolution to the City Council of the cities of Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2025. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve. Do you have any council discussion regarding the resolution? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Bill number 2024-189. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 regarding WPC VAC truck repairs. Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the second reading of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-189. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024, 2025. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five regarding WPC VAC truck repairs.
Final passage.
Second. I have a motion, the second, for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Marshall is absent. Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
All right, we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the second ordinance in relation to this matter. This is the one approving and accepting the quote.
Bill number twenty twenty-four one ninety. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for repairs of water pollution control VAC truck.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, the second, for a second reading of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four one ninety. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for repairs of water pollution control VAC truck.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion, the second, for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
And Marshall is absent. Seven yes, one absent.
Fourth and fifth item tonight, I guess, the city uses a geographic information system, GIS, to map out domains such, much of its infrastructure. This GIS system allows us to quickly see and share information such as property lot lines, ownership, zoning, voting precincts, ward streets, evaluation, contour, water, sewer, stormwater, by hydrants, et cetera. The city participates in an intergovernmental agreement with Pettis County, which basically says the city provides the flyover orthography updates every two years to the whole county, and in turn, the county provides us access to base layer of their recorded property information. We then add our additional layers of infrastructure information. Due to logic challenges, there are, has been a slight lack of coordination in the, the way this has been managed in the city. Individual departments have maintained separate programs at howling locations to manage and view this information, and along with it, have used copied the database and added their individual layers. Consequently, each copy of this database may be in different state of having updated information. Recently, the city assigned the management of the information programs to one person. With this better management, we can combine the software programs into one and stop paying for licenses in different systems. Upon investigating the best way to accomplish this, we determined that if we moved to a cloud version of the software, the management of the database would be streamlined as well. This way, everyone would be pointed in the same database and see the same updated data with all layers they need available to them. Likewise, this method would allow us to more efficiently share this information with outside entities entitled these as a service. We have worked with the software company that represents the industry standard to develop a transition plan over the next three years. With a three-year agreement, they will provide us license to use the current versions of the software, and they will assist us in moving over the cloud storage. Staff recommends approval of the three-year arrangements along with a budget amendment to cover the first-year costs. The second and third-year costs will be partially offset with the saving of the canceling of the various packages we are currently using. And I mean, I basically said, the left hand is gonna know what the right hand is doing and the body in between. It'll bring it all together, one deal, everybody working on the same, same, same level. So, I think it's a great move.
All right, as this is a budget amendment, we have a resolution and two ordinances in relation to this matter. We'll go ahead and call for the reading of the resolution stating facts and reasons first.
Resolution twenty-one twelve. A resolution to the City Council of the Cities today in Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Do you have any council discussion regarding the resolution that is on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We'll now call for the reading of the ordinance amending the budget.
Bill number twenty twenty-four one ninety-one. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five regarding public works admin ARC GIS purchase.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, the second, for the second reading of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four one ninety-one. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five regarding public works admin ARC GIS purchase.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion, the second, for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent and Bogus.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes. Now we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the agreement.
Bill number twenty twenty-four one ninety-two. An ordinance authorizing an enterprise agreement for purchase of ARC GIS online program.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, the second, for the second reading of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four one ninety-two. An ordinance authorizing an enterprise agreement for purchase of ARC GIS online program.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion, the second, for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, roll call please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent. Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
That's all, sir. Motion passes. Thank you, Chairman Hiller. Next, we have Finance Administration. Chairwoman Bogus, you have the floor.
Um, there's one item for consideration through the Finance Administration Committee tonight. Our health insurance brokers provided a presentation regarding this important employee benefit at the last meeting. Uh, the decisions that we make tonight will then be incorporated into the annual open enrollment process in regard to our health insurance.
And I believe we have HR Director Shannon here. If anybody's got any questions. Uh, with not, if there aren't any questions, I can just need a motion, the second, to go ahead and proceed with this.
Motion move as staff's recommendation.
Right. I have a motion, the second. Thank you, Council. And thank you, Chairwoman Bogus. Uh, next, we have Public Safety. Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Uh, the police department has been...
Hold up, hold up. Yeah.
Did you have a motion? I need a motion, the second.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor regarding your discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, very good. Now we'll go ahead and move on to Public Safety.
The police department has been successful in obtaining two grants, one to supply rams and bullet-resistant shields in all marked patrol units. Of course, those are things we hope we never need, but we'd like to have them available. The second is a, uh, purchase of computers designed to withstand the rigorous environment of a patrol car for the drug enforcement unit. So, uh, we get an extra, we got twelve thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars, which we'd like to get, uh, an ordinance or resolution and an ordinance.
All right, so we do have a resolution ordinance in relation to this matter. We'll go ahead and begin with the resolution. This is stating facts and reasons. Call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution twenty-one thirteen. A resolution of the City Council of the Cities today in Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding the resolution? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We're now going to move on to the ordinance. This is the ordinance amending the budget. Uh, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number twenty twenty-four one ninety-three. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five regarding police equipment purchases.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, the second, for the second reading of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four one ninety-three. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five regarding police equipment purchases.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion, the second, for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall is absent. Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Okay, we don't have anything for Community Development. Uh, moving on to appointments. Call for the, uh, reading of the appointment.
Two members of the City Council from Mary Andrew Dawson. New appointment to the Sudey Public Library Board. Tessa Childers replacing Reva Woodward for a three-year term, July one, twenty twenty-four to June thirty, twenty twenty-seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now we have the liquor licenses. Call for the reading of the liquor licenses.
We have four renewals tonight. Jennifer Edwards doing business as Inzone Sports Bar and Grill LLC at thirty-one twenty-nine West Broadway for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales. Kelly Wertz Black doing business as State Fair Spirits at fourteen nineteen South Lemon for packaged liquor taste testing and Sunday sales. Kevin Long doing business as Loyal Order Moose fourteen ninety-four at one nineteen Winchester Drive for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales. And Minerva Perez Marin doing business as El Tapatio at three thousand South Lemon for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales.
Motion to approve and block.
Second.
I have a motion, the second, to approve and block. Do you have any council discussion regarding these liquor licenses? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Uh, now we have any miscellaneous items from the City Council or City Administration?
Yes, uh, there's a auto repair business out on Seth sixty-five Highway. It used to be the old Shelby Auto Repair. Anyway, they have already taken a truckload of, uh, items down to the hurricane victims, and they are taking, uh, some more items now, and they'll be taking them down as soon as they, as soon as they get loaded up.
Like, what do they need? You know?
Uh, just, uh...
Basic, normal...
Yeah, basic drive goods.
Baby things, dry goods.
Yeah.
Do they want water? Do they want...
Oh, yeah.
Toothpaste deters.
Yeah. And so, uh, they're taking items right now, uh, even though, even though the truck hasn't has returned. So as soon as they get back, they're going loaded up and taking back. So, if anyone's interested in taking stuff out there, the old Shelby Auto Repair, I can't think the address.
Cross, cross warehouse.
Yeah.
Flat line, all over now.
Well, you said...
Flat line, all over now.
Okay. So like I said, they're taking items right now, and they're storing them there in their warehouse, so... So, if you're interested, why, jump on board.
All right, thank you, Councilman Cross. Anyone else?
Yeah, I got... I got a couple, I got a couple tickets left, anybody interested for the spaghetti dinner for the, uh, Crime Stoppers of Pettis County. It's their only one, one time a year fundraiser that they do. The tickets are eight dollars apiece, and it guarantees a good meal. Uh, Chris, that is the, the cook at the, at the jail is the one that does the meals, and it's a good meal, so... And it's, it's five to seven, and it, and, uh, I'd say the tickets are eight dollars.
Yeah, very good. Councilman Hill.
Anybody else? I'm going.
Go ahead.
So, last time, um, I just wanna say that there's been some concern that, uh, last time I said I followed the, uh, doing to others as you would have them doing to you, and then I said that I followed the ninth commandment. There's kind of a funny story there, bear no false witness. Um, that's me, not the City Council. I said that, and I also said that, so that people could persuade me in that way. That's how I'm gonna move forward, to move the city and this county forward, get off the snide on some of this stuff, or at least now, that's how I'm gonna try to do it. Um, but if you wanna know who my spiritual advisor is, it's Joe Coral at Sacred Heart, Mother Anne at the Episcopal Church, and Bishop Jones. All those people have given me spiritual advice, uh, number one. Number two, um, I, I think to do this, I truly believe one thing we have to do is communicate, good, bad, right, or wrong. And so, I'm gonna be here every Wednesday at noon as one city councilman with one vote, with the power to make some, you know, a motion to the other city council people. If more than three council people show up, we would have to advertise that, but I think If more than three council people show up, we would have to advertise that, but I think we still have time to notice that up until this Wednesday. What, is it twenty-four or forty-eight hours, twenty-four? So we'll notice that up. I'll be here Wednesday at noon. I'll do that every Wednesday until people quit coming or until, you know, it's reasonable. I'll be here every Wednesday you need me to be here. I'll listen. I'll be glad to explain some of the things that have been implied about me. Uh, I can go a lot further, and we'll have back and forth. I'd like to keep it to an hour, but if you want it to go longer than that, that's cool, you know? And, uh, but I really think, honestly, to move forward, one thing that I kinda am good at is I'm a, I'm a pretty decent teacher, and I really will be honest, and I really will try to treat everyone the way I would expect them to treat me, and we'll do that every Wednesday at noon. If you want to attend, and, uh, I can't make any promises for anybody else, but I'll be here, okay?
All right. Thank you, counsel from Bliss. Uh, anybody else? Having heard none, we've now arrived at our Good and Welfare section of our agenda. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone of the framework of this agreement. Each speaker is requested to step forward, clearly state their name and address, and we'll give a allotted three minutes to present their statement. Please note, this is not a session for dialogue or debate with the council. Nor is it a period for question and answer. It's a time for you to make your voice heard, for us to listen, and your statements to be entered into the public record. We ask that all remarks be kept respectful and pertinent to community management. So with that, we'll go ahead and open up the floor. Anybody who would like to give a statement, go ahead and step to the microphone and be allotted three minutes. We ask you, please state your name and your address.
Kyle Van Vliet, twelve-oh-one South Montgomery. Since this rainwater project has started, my family and I have been put through a considerable amount of issues. These issues have been wide-ranging from being left without water or gas to having no internet, and not being able to use the road or having parking, having to park half a block away from our home, all of which, per a representative of the contract company, are little things. The city has continued to put out misinformation involving road closures, water outages. Certain members of the city government have shown little interest resolving these issues or shown any compassion for the people that live in the area where these issues are happening. These issues are not affecting my family and our home alone. It is also affecting my neighbors. My family and I are just the ones that are making our voices heard. After speaking with a few members of my neighborhood, they have stated that they are scared to speak out because they are afraid of the city government will retaliate by sending code, out code enforcement to speak and taking their homes, excuse me. They are fearful of this because many of them live paycheck to paycheck and cannot afford to fight these citations or fix these issues they are being cited for. Again, instead of being helpful governing body to help the community or pointing people in a direction to get the help they need, the government solves those issues by taking their home, whether or not the municipal government sees it like that or not. It's a realistic fear that these people face.